Okay, we are at seven o'clock and as I mentioned Herb said that he would be a little bit late to start. And Shelley said she wasn't going to be here tonight, so I think we'll go ahead and call the meeting reporter and note attendance. And we will begin with our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
The United States of America.
One nation. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right, let's have a review of the agenda and at this point I would accept the motion to approve the agenda as currently published. They'll be sent out a note indicating that she accidentally left off the action for policies earlier that got added several hours back, so make sure to take note of that.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second it.
Moving second, any discussion on the agenda?
Did Jonathan freeze?
I believe so.
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, we can take the vote.
Hey. Jennifer.
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Lori? Lori?
Sorry about that, yes.
Thank you. And how about Jonathan, is he unfrozen?
Yeah, I'm back. That's the weirdest thing. Zoom actually restarted on me, so I don't know what was going on. Um, yeah, I vote yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
All right. Hopefully that won't happen again. So next up, we are on the consent agenda and which is to approve the minutes equal 12 and approve the employment of two individuals. I would at this point accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Jonathan, I can, sorry, go ahead. I can make a motion to approve the employment of Brian Holt, a social worker, and Mandy Pack as principal of Robert Frost.
Second.
Right, moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Jonathan.
About yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Lori?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Oh. Did someone freeze? Hello?
I was waiting to hear Debbie answer that question, but maybe I missed it. I seem to be having some weird issues tonight, so.
Oh.
Okay, did Debbie, did you say that? I didn't hear Lori answer and I didn't hear Debbie say we were good to go.
Yes, Lori answered. We are, we're good to go, all in favor, thank you.
So, yeah, apologies, guys. I don't know what's going on, so I'll.
Okay.
I'll keep waiting, gets worse, then from you may have to take it. Next up, we have our student representatives. Evelyn and Samantha tonight.
Hello, everyone. I am Evelyn Morales Sierra, the ASP Diversity Officer and School Board Representative.
And I'm Sam or Samantha Deloy, and I'm the ASP Treasurer.
To start off tonight, our FFA has recently had elections for new student officers. They are also preparing to compete in state for five different categories. Not only that, but they also just had two current students be elected as officers at the district level. And lastly, students are raising animals for sale at the Marion County Fair in July.
Next up, we have FBLA, and they recently achieved the goal of champion chapter for the third year in a row, as well as having the largest chapter in Oregon for the first time. And also Mrs. Miles, the advisor of the FBLA, won the Oregon FBLA Advisor of the Year Award. They also had six different students earn their business achievement awards. As for the state competition, Isaac Samarikov took first place in public speaking. And Megan Fisher and Haley Smith also took first place in Intro to Event Planning. And eighteen other students placed in the top ten within their FBLA events.
Our trap shooting team is currently in their third week of competition with two more remaining weeks in their season. They currently have thirty-three athletes competing, which is the most they've ever had. Once the regular season is over, they will be competing at the Oregon State Tournament on June twenty-seventh at the Hillsborough Trap and Skeet Club. They are also hoping to qualify squad for the national championship in Mason, Michigan in July.
The Red Cross Club is currently planning another blood drive to take place on May twenty-sixth. And it will be the fifth blood drive since the pandemic has started, which makes our school one of the most successful high school blood drive locations in the state. This time, or the times will vary from one to six P.M. and they're hoping to get as many blood donations as possible.
Oregon Battle of the Books just had a virtual meeting on Monday where they put their own spin on the Obob Tournament. They plan on reading one more book and meeting again on May seventeenth.
Our G A Club is currently doing check-ins with students as well as meeting, as meeting to provide a positive community for the LGBTQIA+.
Spring sports will be wrapping up their seasons next week, and winter sports officially begin their season this week with tryouts and practices.
ASB will finish wrapping up their virtual Best Fox Ever competition with live interviews and a finale on Friday to announce this year's Best Fox Ever. And the Best Fox Ever competition raises money for Medical Teams International and Silverton Area Community Aid.
That wraps up our updates for clubs, activities, and sports at Silverton High School.
Thank you for having us and go Foxes.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. All right, next up, we have our school reports and we are going to begin with Bethany and Kathy is going to be presenting. Hi Kathy.
Oh, here we go, here we go. Hello, 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 hello. Hey, exciting stuff from that fox den indeed. So, um, you know, we're all just kind of doing things that we have to do right now. Lot of stress, lot of juggling. My biggest thing this year has been schedule changing, but you hired a great principal for Robert Frost, Mandy Pack. Way to go champs, let's give it up. Two, 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 two. I was trying to throw some hand, you know, exclamation marks and stuff through there, but I didn't see myself in the screen. So what we have here today is Mrs. Frank presenting Bethany Charter School. You know, it's really has been tough, but we're so proud of the staff. They're just, we, we were ready for it. We knew this fall that we weren't going to open, so instead of planning on all the scenarios, what if, what if, I'm not a what-if person, I'm more of a, let's wait and see, and it happened. We were not able to open, so we just rode right into what needed to happen. And it was virtual all the way. We did self-checks on the biggest thing at Bethany and probably Silver Falls is checking in on kids. Their social emotional well-being is far more important than academics. When you're suffering a pandemic, you got an ice storm, you've got a, the, the biggest thing was the fires within the area. I was out distributing computers to the children's families who wanted to go to Utah and get out of this whole thing. And you see horses and everything being pulled out. So really, social emotional was our well-being for Bethany. So I presented you first our annual report, which, you know, a lot of people don't really read it. It's a must-do. So I got that into your hands and that's also in the, the hands of O D E to make sure we're complying with all those things. But the video that I presented is really just an inside look at Bethany when Scott Drew said, hey, let's bring children into the presentations. I'm all about that, but I was like, wow, I can't really do that through virtual. So we have a look inside of Bethany and just what's going on. It's remarkable. We're surviving, you're surviving, and that is the biggest thing. And I'm sure we're going to have more situations. So I also included within that report survey because charter schools have to do this big survey thing every year, survey, 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 let's see how we're doing. And it was based on our hybrid model because once we went hybrid, you have to make sure that you're meeting the needs equity of the kids at home, kids in the school. So I've, the results are in there as well, but questions?
Hi Kathy.
Hi there, Janet.
How are you?
Looking good. You know, all of you are changing over, so to understand also what's going on down the road is pretty difficult, so.
I just wanted to, I don't have a question for you, but I did want to say how much I really enjoyed reading. I did read your report. And I really appreciated your vision statements and your student goals. They were very inspiring, but also really substantive. And I just, I just wanted to applaud you for, for putting so much thought into the vision that you have for your community. So thank you for that. That's amazing.
Yeah, really, it's, you know, especially through a pandemic. Let's just give the whole person thing going and give them love, give them comfort, the ability to come out of this and to realize, keep on the sunny side, always on the sunny side. It, you don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Alrighty, hey.
Other questions for Kathy?
None other than I deeply appreciate your energy. Oh, I do. It's always wonderful to see you. Yeah, thank you. Well, you know, I wish I could condense it because now I have no naughty students, so I'm out weeding and gardening and putting up. The, I, I appreciate your one dollar rent on the property, but yet it's creating a lot of flipover. Gardening, you know, kids, I feel if you can enter and see a lot of happenings going on, a lot of beautification, they're going to just want to be there. I, I don't know what else with S E L. We can hire all these counselors and hit them there, hit them here, but I think it truly happens within your building, within your families, within your, 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 what you're offering the kids. So our summer camp, we want to do a big summer camp and just hip it up. Take them on field trips, learn about Orville Roth, learn about the berry farms and bring it back instead of stress, stress, stress.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Alrighty. Hey, so can we watch that video live? I would pop you all popcorn and we could just sit back and watch it. And, you know, really, plus I'm missing Jeopardy right now. We don't know who the new Jeopardy host is, so. Sorry, okay, never mind. So thank you and you guys all have a good night and keep on doing what you're doing. That's what we gotta do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tonight, accent?
Oh, Christian.
I was gonna say if there were no additional question, oh, there's, there she is, okay. All right, we are going to switch over to Community Roots with Kristen Kelly and we'll begin now. Thank you.
That is going to be a very tough act to follow and I kind of wish I went first. Um, so my name is Kristen and I am a brand new administrator this year to Community Roots and what a year to start. And I have big shoes to fill and Miranda, I know, left a huge gaping hole in the heart of everybody here in Silver Falls School District. So I'm filling Miranda's shoes. I hope I can do that justice and move above and beyond. And the school is doing great. Also, not gonna lie, been a tough year. Don't need to tell you all that. I also want to first off say a huge heartfelt thank you to everybody at the district who has made me feel so welcome. I have a million and one questions and no matter who I called or sent an email to or reached out to, everyone was very gracious and answering the questions that I had, no matter how big or how small they were. So I just want to extend a really warm heartfelt gratitude to everybody at the district and the admin office, the I T department, especially wholly, you know, they are amazing rock stars. So yes, thank you. The other things this year, I guess the highlights, similar to Bethany, we also kind of started out in terms of I, you know, we kind of made the decision right off the bat that we were just going to stay in C D L the whole year. Come hell or high water, we're going to stay in C D L and just have some anchor and some sort of sense of security. And we did that up until the governor's orders back in March. And then we transitioned to hybrid, so it was a pretty, I mean, it was a transition like everyone else had that transition back to hybrid. And we, as a Montessori school, we have unique needs, unique learning needs and learning environments. A prepared environment is a huge part of the Montessori philosophy and taking that prepared environment remotely is immensely difficult. And we partnered with an organization called Guidepost Montessori. And they use the altitude platform and the I T department was really gracious in helping us upload that to all of the devices. And so that's been our learning platform. We have a lot of support with them and really great feedback from parents. Hybrid is going really well right now. We have about seventeen children who decided or have chosen to remain in comprehensive distance learning out of all of the, out of our entire population. So we are doing that parallel to the hybrid piece. Also, similar to what Kathy said, a lot of the, the successful pieces of the hybrid have been returning back and just connecting with the land, right? We have an amazing outdoor education, amazing garden, getting the students out for that social emotional piece, connecting to the land. We have a, we have been doing home visits throughout the year, connecting with those students who have needs or extra supports and making sure that nobody is left behind. Everybody is in the fold and we are all being equitable in all of our practices. Some other pretty interesting things that have happened this year, we wrapped up our expansion grant in December, which was huge. And then we are still partnering with National, well, it's called N C M P S, it's National Montessori in the public sector. And they, Seth Webb is their consultant who has been working with us over the past few years. And this year, we kind of brought some of the strategic plan and priorities across the finish line and taking a mountain of data and starting to parse it out. And the big lift that we're doing is taking all of that data and looking at it through an equity lens. And we're working with Buffalo Cloud Consulting and Christine Moses and her team. So she works with our leadership team, she works with our board, she works with our staff, with all of the diversity, equity, and inclusion practices, and we are doing an equity audit and making sure that our guides and our classroom environments are culturally responsive. And we're examining our biases constantly. And so this is a really big piece that's moving forward and super important. So we've been, we've been doing all of that. And so we have now the, the three-year priorities that we're parsing out into the different segments and going to start working on that because what else? I mean, there's like nine, a mountain of stuff to do. And so we're just, we're moving forward, right? And then the last piece I wanted to mention too is kind of, we're really focusing now on moving out of that reactionary mode and getting, and like moving beyond that, that almost trauma stress cycle responsive of just like reacting, reacting, reacting to all of these outside stimulus and now starting to like kind of bring it back a little bit and starting to be more action, action oriented and more mindful and not that we weren't mindful before, but you know, the relentlessness of the, of this year has been profound. And so really trying to be mindful of that and bringing those practices to, to move out of that reactionary mode and be more in a productive, mindful mode going forward. So Community Roots is doing great. The kids are great. It's amazing to see them on campus. I mean, there's just no word for it really, you know? And our staff is great, staff's, they're great, but everyone's burned out, like not gonna lie, it's, it's been a hard year. But the minute those kids come on campus, it's like, it's a huge change, you know, the staff, like it's just, it's our students. That is, that is the light, that is the life of our school, right? And so not having that, that, that connection with them in person was, you know, dimming, but now it's, it's returning. So it's really great to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you have any questions?
Just a quick one. Um, thank you, Kristen, for your presentation. You, you guys have such an exciting middle school model that is, I know relatively new. And those kids, by definition, the program is really geared toward being outdoors in farm-based, some farm-based experiences. Were those, were those students able to get out at all this year? Given that it's so focused that way, they were?
I mean, well, they were. We had some home visits, but in the virtual world, not as much. In the hybrid, now they are connecting a little bit to the land, the kids that have, that are in hybrid. But that, thanks for bringing that up because one thing we're working on is moving our adolescent program off campus next year. We're very limited in our actual facility. We're renting from Silverton Friends Church and we're kind of outgrowing that space in some ways. So we're looking to partner with the Silverton Grange and have our middle school students use that facility as their, their facility going forward, which also has a connection to the land and community gardens and a really deep rich history with that. So that's in the works. We're in the middle of, well, we're jumping through the hoops with the county right now with conditional use permitting and things like that. So, but that's, hopefully that all goes through and then this, in the fall, we'll have a space for the middle schoolers to realize that vision of the land-based peace.
That's exciting. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Jonathan, I just got a quick comment. Thanks, Kristen. Just, I just got a quick comment. I just, I've always noticed this over the years that both of our, both of our charter schools have a land, have a land outside focused. They, they both want to connect back to the land and I just, I've noticed that on both of them, you both have a different approach to things, but both of, both schools have a back-to-the-land kind of focus and I just, I like that a lot. I'm, I'm a farmer, obviously, but, but I just noticed that, you know, both, both charter schools have that, have that, have that commonality and I think it's great. So, well, thank you.
Thank you. Tom, I'll just follow up on that because I grew up on a small farm and I don't currently live on a small farm and my kids do go to Community Roots and that's one thing that I'm super duper grateful for is being able to be, my, my daughter was at Gearcrest, taking care of the goats and doing all of the, you know, the stuff that you do on a farm. And for me, I'm, I'm super grateful to have that opportunity for my own child. So I didn't plan on saying that, but Tom, your comment reminded me that that was a super important thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's great, it's great.
I think maybe even more so now at this very fast-paced digital age, right? And especially coming off of a, a year of screens to reconnect with like the roots and the grounding of nature and those rhythms is probably highly important. So, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Yeah, total agreement here too. So, great comments, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say too that I hope that works out for you and the Grange. I know that they have some wonderful opportunities for raised beds and, and getting in touch that way. And I could see the students really loving that. So, good luck to you. I made that work out.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet, you bet.
All right, well, thanks, Kristen. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Okay, it looks like next up we have S F B A with Michelle Stover.
Everybody.
Hey, Michelle.
Uh, I'm assuming you introduced me already, Jonathan. I missed it when I was being added. So, okay, perfect. Well, uh, thanks, everybody. Good to see your faces tonight. It's also kind of nice to see some sunshine out the window. That's, that was a blessing today to walk from my classroom and not get poured on like I did a couple days last week. So, um, this past week was Teacher Appreciation Week and I know that our, our teachers really felt that last week. We, I wanted to say thank you to the district for providing us with free coffee on Wednesday. That was really nice. I went on my lunch break and got my free coffee. So thank you for, for that gift to our, to our licensed staff. That was really appreciated. I've heard lots of, lots of good reports of teachers, you know, feeling the love from different community members, from parents, from kiddos and from their own building staff. So we just wanted to extend a, a thank you to everybody for that. It has been a tough year, so it was nice to, to have some of those. You know, some of that work acknowledged particularly last week. So, um, couple things, just to, I'm, I'm going to keep it short and, short and sweet this week or this month. Um, we have our, our monthly S F B A meeting tomorrow and we are looking forward to going over our applicants for our S F B A scholarships. We always do scholarships of students whose parents are S F B A members. We ask them to write an essay about what it's like to live with a teacher. And those are always really great to read and really, really great to, to support those students who have, you know, supported their parents in their efforts to teach and you know, we, we all know what it's like to live with a teacher or to be a teacher or many of us do. And it's long, long hours and sometimes that takes away from, from families. So we like to give back to the kids. And so we're looking forward to seeing those essays and, and just celebrating those guys as they end their high school career and move on into the future. So that's an exciting thing we've got coming up. And then the other thing that we were going to talk about tonight was the high school staff is very excited to have Sione. He was in the building today. I was talking to Allison Stolfus earlier and he popped into her classroom and so she was excited to get to talk to him and Ed John was taking him on a tour and they were checking in with folks and we couldn't think of a better person to give him an introduction to the high school than Ed. So we're excited to have him and they're, they're really excited to get started working with him. So. we're excited to have him and they're, they're really excited to get started working with him. So um, that's, that's about it. So if you guys have any questions, I'd love to hear from you. If not, thank you again.
Thanks, Michelle. I can't wait to meet Sione. Also, I haven't yet, but it'll be amazing, I'm sure. So I can't wait. Okay. Well, thank you. All right. I heard that Michelle Livingston was not presenting tonight, so we will, I think, move straight into public comment. And with that, if you would like to make a public comment, please email Debbie and also Maddie, if you want to enable the raise your hand feature, we could do that during this period as well.
They can raise their hands.
Perfect. Thank you. I believe we had somebody already emailed regarding public comments, so.
Yep. I'm gonna bring Tom Newton in now.
Jonathan, do you have to read this statement?
Yeah, thank you. I've got it right here. All right. While you are promoting Tom, I will read this. So we're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. We all model the way for our students and we ask that you share your thoughts in respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If follow up is necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. And as always, there is a second public comment that occurs later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of the meeting.
Right. Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate all the time you all invest in our community. So I am Tom Newton. I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as a representative of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee of which I've been a member for the last two years. I've been asked to represent five other private citizens who also participate on the LRFP committee. These are Peter Matska, Josh Bort, Colin Scott, Eliza Torlin, and Ray Kaser. I am speaking to you in this manner. As I don't see a mechanism to communicate through the committee to the board. I'm concerned about the lack of leadership on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee. Lack of leadership greatly affects the ability of the LRFP to provide solid information to the school board. And I believe the board needs good information with which to plan the direction of the district. Write a bond measure that will address the district needs for productive, fiscally sound learning environments going forward. When the LRFP first convened, we had leaders elected. The district website currently does not recognize these leaders. And the committee seems to be drifting a bit. In the last five meetings, there have been repetitive requests to clarify how the leadership is structured with no answer given. Much of the direction of the committee seems repetitive, rehashing material from prior March of 2020. It can take several meetings to have support for new information requested. Many concerns of public meeting law violations were brought up, but as there was no leadership, there's been no direct mechanism for clarifying what was acceptable. I will say, March, in March, Dan Bush kindly addressed the group and there is a letter from the March, from March 25th posted on the website, giving us some rules to follow 16 months after our first meeting. And he wrote actually a very clear statement. But my request is that the board support having the committee be able to elect leadership to confirm or confirm prior leadership within its ranks. I want to give a little background. Many of the members, me included, were invited and agreed to participate in this committee two years ago by Andy Belondo. Prior to our first meeting, the district pulled the district with the Nelson Study. This was performed with no input from us. And it is my opinion that there was significant critical information which was not collected, rendering long-term planning difficult. I am of the impression that another poll is to be sent out. Among other considerations, I believe the committee should have input on the questions asked on the next poll. And as it is structured right now, we have no mechanism for ensuring this. We have a dynamic, engaged group of citizens representing much of their district's populations and interests. In the first months, we had truly dynamic person and online conversations exploring options and problems our district was facing and discussing how these could be addressed. At the same time that COVID hit, BLRB Architects was hired. This is about March or February of last year. I don't have a specific notification in my email about this, which was they were hired to facilitate the working of our committee. After an interview with two applicants, after that, their representative, Jenna Jemson, became our de facto leader, sending out LRFP invites and writing the agendas. Yet since then, he has heavily directed our meetings. He specifically states, however, that his job is to be a facilitator, not a leader. There's no question that he has brought some significant useful information. However, he only communicates only as a designated meetings. The facilitator writes our minutes and he writes the agenda. The agenda is set up really only hours, sometimes a couple of days prior to an upcoming meeting and prior meeting notes are generally posted only weeks after meeting. For example, in January, in February, we were asked to vote on a proposal for what to recommend in a bond. The choices given to the committee were only roughly outlined in the agenda sent out prior to the meeting and were not available to easily review during the Zoom meeting. The original vote was staged as a basis for getting, quote, a feel for the, how the committee wanted to approach a bond, but in subsequent meetings has been largely referred to as a decision. As a point of interest, the meeting
Thirty seconds?
Last several meetings, minutes do not reflect the committee members' requests for clarity on our structure and leadership. In essence, having a designated community member would be a valuable element of structure to have in this committee, appoint person to provide direction and clarity. And I think in the end, we'll achieve a better outcome. The Awesome Grant, which is part of the interest of the committee specifies where to have leaders who speak to the board about our progress. So in essence, it's also a requirement. From one perspective, this process feels like a ship at sea with a highly motivated crew and no captain. Thank you for considering the time.
Thank you for sharing. I appreciate the input.
We usually don't comment after public comment, but I'm hoping that Tom, you can send the board your, the written comments that you read to us so that we can have those details.
Definitely send them forward.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, are, I don't see any hands raised in the audience. Were there any other emails that came through?
No, Jonathan.
All right. Well, thank you. Then I believe that concludes our first public comment and we're going to roll right into administrator and staff report, starting with the superintendent report.
Well, thanks, Jonathan. Good evening, everyone. I just, I wanted to start out with a couple of things. Number one, and most importantly, I want our public to know that we're staying the course with our hybrid in-person instructional model for the remainder of the year and, and it's, it's great to see interacting with their teachers and as we visit schools almost on a daily basis now. I also want to reiterate that our, our full focus is on opening our school's district in a five day per week and in-person model as well. And so all of the preparation that we're making from, from master scheduling to transportation to all of our ancillary services are moving forward with that in mind and opening up in a five day a week model. And so I'll be giving you regular updates on that. I want to give a special shout out to our business department because of all the incredible work they did to prepare information for the last budget committee. And in particular, I wanted to recognize Sharon Etzel, Kim Dowd for their tireless work to, to get the information necessary and to sort the information necessary that Steve needed for his presentation. Also Debbie for getting together all the binders and all the, the things that made that meeting run so efficiently and for Derek McElfresh as well, helping us with the message. I wanted to make sure that they know how grateful I am, how grateful our district is for their service and definitely would not have gone as smoothly as it did without their tireless efforts. And, and I felt that our first budget committee meeting went quite well, was very productive. So thank you for that. And lastly, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the teachers that shared at the last board meeting and public comment and shared their concerns about the transfer process for Mark Twain and Robert Frost. K5 schools that will be starting this next year in a reconfigured K5 model. And I told the board at the last meeting that I would come back to you with a follow up and tonight I've asked Dan Bush to, for, to give us a status report from an HR standpoint on how we're doing and what we've done to work with our teachers to to get teachers closer to their comfort level in terms of the, the grade level that they'll be teaching next year and, and to kind of let you know about some of the problem solving we've done. And so having done that, said that, I will go ahead, Dan, if you're ready to go, you have a presentation to share and thank you, Dan and Leslie for all the work you've done as well.
Thanks, Scott. And I normally use my, more familiar with with Google Meet. So we're going to try to see what I can do here to project this because I am not sure how to share a screen from Zoom very well.
And there's a green button down on the bottom that shows share screen.
I see that, but then it's redirecting, asking me where I want it from. And, and then it's, see if I can do this. I'm getting some error messages here. Hmm. I wonder if one of my teammates has that presentation handy enough to be able to take the wheel for me because my Mac is, is arguing with me.
Oh. Dan, you can email it to me if you want.
It's like Leslie's about there.
I think I'm about, yeah.
I was gonna say, I can share it too, if you want.
Let me see if it'll let me.
Perfect. Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
We like to say teamwork makes the dream work. So appreciate that. So, yeah, so I would thank Scott for giving me an opportunity to work to get back to the board on this. And so we'll, we'll jump into the status update here and, and I'm going to walk you through kind of where things started in this, this transfer process and, and staffing decisions related to these two great schools that are reopening as K5 schools. And, and then, you know, some things we've learned through this process and again, and then to bring it home to where we're at today. So I think Leslie, if you can move to that next screen. So we started this process, you know, I've, if I recollect, we started it late in the fall, maybe winter time, talking to the staffs at most schools about what we saw as processes. We really wanted to be upfront in our communication and, and really get out in front of this process. And so some of the initial conversations we had was related to naturally their concerns about grade level or building preferences. And also acknowledging some of the, the tight relationships that these, these two schools have with each other. And I think one of, you know, I'm going to focus on a slide here in a little bit. I won't regarding lessons learned. And I think one thing that in this process, we were overly optimistic about being able to place everybody where they wanted to be or, or potentially with who they had been used to teaching with. And so this was, this was one factor that when we go into, as we, that last bullet there talks about is after we got the, the, the input from staff, we started to realize that meeting everybody's preferences and whatnot was going to be a bigger undertaking than, than what we anticipated. The other thing is we did some listening sessions with both staffs and, and really tried to find out, we had one meeting with each staff in particular, where we talked about, you know, what may, what makes Mark Twain great? What makes Robert Frost great? And what we, what we learned through that, those listening sessions was just how strong the systems they, they were at each school, a really commitment to kids. And just a really feeling like their systems in both schools were really solid to support students. But we also realized that they were very unique and very different from each other, not one right or wrong, but just different. And realized that, you know, that one of the beliefs we have is school culture is the foundation for a successful learning environment. And what we realized is that we were blending cultures. We were bringing two schools together. You know, and as it says there, gaining the best from both was the goal, but we felt like we needed to get some of Robert Frost into Mark Twain and some of Mark Train into Robert Frost, if you will. So how can we bring some three, five teachers from Robert Frost into the K2 realm and vice versa? So that, so that there's a blending of these schools so that they can learn to work together. And, and, and so that was a shift in priorities. One thing that, that I'll bring up later is that we also, as we've tried to resolve some of the staffing concerns is enroll, enrollment started playing a role in that. But that wasn't a big factor initially when we made these staffing assignments, but it did play a factor a little bit later in it. And I think the one thing that, as we shift into the next slide about lessons learned is we really were reopening, we were opening two schools in buildings that were already in existence. And I think if we would have taken a step back and looked at this is what would we be doing if we were reopening, if we were opening two schools? How would we staff two schools if we were opening? I wish in, in going back that we would have taken that lens to look at this to say, what would we do if we were opening two schools? So some, some lessons that we've learned through this process, this is one of my things that I always try to remind myself is to measure twice and cut once. And so kind of making sure you really look through everything before you execute a plan. And, and underneath that, you know, time never, should never drive our decisions. So one thing during some of our listening sessions with the staff is we really were ambitious in getting these staffing decisions made to them. And we had made a commitment to get them done before spring break. And the feedback we got from staff was that would be awesome. If you could get this before spring break, that would really, really help us in this transition. And so we, we set that as a goal. And then as we kind of encountered some of the the difficulties in staffing, some of the priority shifts, we started to, to go ahead and move forward with some decisions. And what we really should have done, especially when we shifted our priorities towards how do we blend these cultures? The big lesson learned was those next two bullets of kind of resetting expectations, realizing we're not going to be able to meet everybody's preferred list or preferred preference and take additional input. Those are two steps that we should have done to really get a better pulse on where people are at and get a range of where people were willing to move to. That, that misstep along the way is something that, you know, we, we definitely have, have learned from there. And I think the other thing would have been, and it kind of goes along the lines with the, the taking additional input is having personal conversations. Again, taking that time versus trying to meet a, a spring break deadline is to let's engage in individual conversations with people to understand better how to, to place them. So in response to, after notifying staffs of staffing decisions, we offered meetings with every teacher. I think Leslie and I met with, you know, over 25 teachers, some on multiple occasions to really listen. This, just listen to their feedback, listen to their requests, better understand their, their strengths. And so I think that listening, those listening sessions really helped us in terms of really trying to identify how to re, make some reassignments. And so we identified teachers seeking something than their initial placement. We also had our principals, Greg Cots and Leslie Carsley do individual conversations, take all of that feedback. And then we also were in regular communication with SFDA about this, just And then we also were in regular communication with S F E A about this, just making sure that we were hearing from their leadership as well. And so over the last month, almost two months, we've we've now at our place where teachers who requested their assignment be reconsidered have been placed at their grade level or within one grade level of where they would like to be. So we have gotten nearly everyone back to their preferred grade level. And if that was not possible, to get them within one grade level of where they would like to be. And so on Friday, we sent them the updated staffing roster and we've we've listed that as final with some some caveats or some understandings that we have some specialist positions open that that could lead to depending on the hiring of those positions that could lead to some openings if some internal candidates were hired for those positions. So that that might produce some openings if for folks that may still want something slightly different. And so now we're shifting towards the logistical logistical tasks of moving staff. So how do we? How do we talk about who moves to what buildings? We have tech involved, we have facilities, how, what's the process between now and the end of the school year? For people to move into different classrooms, different buildings. And then also moving into supporting new assignments and new teams. So we are very open to what people need. The collective bargaining agreement allows for lots of support for teachers that are transferred. We're working closely with S F E A to make sure that those supports are the their folks know what those supports are. And really, if someone even says, you know, that maybe didn't quite qualify under the contract for supports, but you know, want some support to work with teams where we're more than willing to support new teachers as they as we launch these two new schools. And the other thing, you know, that last bullet says is we were committed to doing some celebrating of what has made Mark Twain K two a successful school the last couple of years, celebrate those successes and same with Robert Frost three, five. We're going to have some end of the year celebrations of those schools as we launched some exciting new steps into opening new schools that are in existing buildings. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Dan. I thought it was pretty comprehensive. Does anybody have any questions for Dan? Well, I appreciate the follow up and the details. Really helpful.
Yeah, no problem. And a big shout out to Leslie. Her and I have tag team communications, meetings, everything else and and really appreciate working closely with teaching and learning and HR is really makes for exciting, exciting work, even even in tough circumstances. So thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie. Right. Anything else, Scott, from you regarding?
I think that's good. Dan, thank you so much. Leslie, thank you so much.
Okay, any questions for Scott regarding his early report? Okay, then we are going to move on to the financial report with Steve.
Thank you, Jonathan, and good evening, everyone. I have a finance, the financial report, and I also have an action item tonight, which I'll I'll move into after the financial recap on pension obligation bond. The enrollment report is attached to the financial report and we did inch back up a little bit more again this month for the third straight months, a month since we hit our low in January of 3,540 kids, the enrollment at the end of April is 3,579. So not not a big jump, about a slightly over a 1% jump from from our low about 40 kids, but we're still down 361 kids or 9.2% since the end of the school year last year. I would expect that we'll probably just be settled into this this number somewhere close to 3,600 through the end of the school year as I believe that most families just kind of settled into whatever decision they made through the end of this year. We talked quite a bit about enrollment for for next year. We talk about it each month and at the budget meeting last week as well. And right now we are projecting a higher number than where we're at now, but not back to where we were at the end of last year. And it's really hard to know right now with any certainty where where we may be because we we still don't know exactly what service model will be in. We'll learn, learn more with each passing day and the goal is that we'll be back to full five day instruction in the fall and that will certainly help a great deal with with the enrollment situation. So we'll just continue to to watch it. We'll continue to update you on a monthly basis as to where those numbers are at and and go from there. The financial report is the standard monthly financial report, but I've also included a historical report that was also in the supplemental materials of the budget last week. It's a five year historical actual, which I think is quite helpful to see the trends in the revenue and the expenditures over the years as well as this year's budget. And I think if you take that and put that side by side with the financials for this month and where we're at year to date through April, that will give you a really nice comparison just to see how things have progressed this year, not just compared to last year, but also how we ended up in in prior years as well. So hopefully you'll you'll find that additional report helpful for this month as well. I wanted to move on to the the big item for the night, which is the resolution. I'm recommending passage of this resolution tonight for the consideration, or at least to to continue moving forward with the consideration in the process of potential for a pension obligation bond. Our all in date isn't until July 6th, so we still have two months to decide as to whether this will be prudent for for the district to do. We have engaged with a municipal advisor, David Olbrich from Special District Association. He also helped us when we did the general obligation bond refinance last September. Each district is required to hire that advisor. And so he'll he'll help us as we get closer to the time. But this, for those that may not know about this, reverts back to our March 22nd boardwork session, there was a presentation done by Lauren McMillan from Piper Sandler. Gave about a 40 minute presentation with some follow up Q and A. And that has been reposted on tonight's agenda for people to look back at so that you can see specifically what the potential savings may be for for our district under different interest rate scenarios. As you may recall, we were poised to come to the April board meeting with this resolution. But the process was put on a one month pause by Hawkins and Piper Sandler. The reason for that is literally a few days after our March boardwork session at the March PERS board meeting. PERS informed folks that the Oregon Investment Council that oversees PERS investments was starting to engage in a conversation about the possibility of reducing the assumed earnings rate in PERS, which currently is at 7.2% to somewhere in the neighborhood of possibly around 6.5%. And so that was material enough to take a timeout and say, you know, what what do we need to do in our consideration for this pension obligation bond? Of course, this has to do more with the 20 or 22 or 25 years that we have this potential bond that we're paying back on and the side account that we have with PERS that we we will be paying our unfunded actuarial liability off early. And what that side account would, you know, what what it's going to make in the market. The other side is what we're going to be borrowing at, which has to do with 10, 20, 30 year treasury rates, which are still low. They have crept up a little bit, but they're still historically low. So with that, they felt it to be prudent to ask Eco Northwest to update the report that they did in the fall to include another scenario that had tighter margins between what we borrow and what the what what the investment may or may not make. So that's that's what they did. And then they gave districts the choice. We had, I think it was over 20 school districts and a handful of community colleges that were looking to do this. They gave districts the option to either continue with the process that we have going now without knowing exactly where where PERS will land on their assumed earnings rate, because this conversation will still occur over the next few months. So by updating that Eco Northwest report, that at least gave us another look without knowing exactly where the assumed earnings rate would would be. So they they took another rate layer, they went 4.5% true interest cost was the high and they went to 5.5%. So they added that column. Or they said, if you don't want to be part of this, we could wait three or four months and do a second group and wait until the new assumed earnings rates come out. Many more of the districts have decided to move forward because of the interest rate climate in the treasury market. And we still have the opportunity to borrow at an all time low in this program over a 20 year period. Again, just to put it in perspective, when the district did this in 2003 and 2004, we borrowed at 5.73% and 5.49% respectively. And even though there's been some down years, it's been, you know, we've had a lot of good years. And to date, we have saved $5.4 million present value or 32.5% versus where we would have been if we didn't didn't do this. So there's no guarantees, obviously. But I believe at least for the two months, we'll be able to see what the market activity is. And, you know, see where those treasury rates go, see if we get any more hints about the market because we know that the worst thing that could happen would be a rough first year like the 2007 borrowers had. And there's no way of 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 knowing exactly what's going to happen there, but I believe at least the numbers are favorable enough for us to continue on the path and give us this extra time to decide if it's something that we we want to do or not. So basically, the resolution gets into what we're asking for really on page three under section two, which is basically authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of the bond in accordance with with the resolution in an amount which does not exceed the amount necessary to produce proceeds equal to the district's pension liability. It also, we've selected a rate of 4.00% total interest or true interest cost as the maximum by which that we would do this. If it's above that, it's an automatic no go. And we, even if it's below, we wouldn't have to continue. And also allows us to, among other things, enter into an intercept agreement with Oregon Department of Education, the way that this guarantee for payment on the bond, which are semi annual payments gets done is O D E automatically deducts whatever are on actually on a monthly basis, and then it's held by a trustee and intercept from our state school fund payment. And then the trustee is paid on a semi annual basis so that the bondholders are paid. So that's that's an instrument that they've had since the inception of this program 20 years ago. And that's that's basically, yeah, there's a lot of legal language in here. And then the second half of the document includes the April 15th update to the Eco Northwest report. And you can see the the summary of their findings and the update, they mentioned the update they did on page three. And there's a chart, I believe, on page four, so or five. So hopefully that was something that along with the analysis that was presented on March 22nd, I know it's a lot of information, but I really tonight wanted to explain why it was delayed a month. And I do feel confident that if we were to consider this, the right thing to do is to to stay in this first group and see where it goes. With that, I would entertain any questions. I know it's a complex matter, so.
Yeah, and just, you know, I think I have a pretty good understanding, but for everybody else who's listening to a if we come out ahead on this and it looks like statistically it's somewhere between at the low end, maybe the 75 to 80% likelihood and at the high end decides 90 or higher likely then what that really translates to is it stretches our dollar in years in the future within the allocations we are granted from the state, right? So all things being equal and an equal amount from the state, our dollars goes farther. Do I have that basically right?
Correct. Of course, we're not going to know until, you know, 2022 years out if we are you know, going to come out ahead. We know with this current situation we have that again, we're 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 ahead by quite a bit and we should be fine. We're we're down to the last, what, five? Five years or so on that, but we would get by paying when this settles, we our U A L is currently about $34 million. This money would go right to PERS, pay off our current U A L. And we'd get nearly a 10% rate credit on the rate on the on the payroll rate that we have to pay PERS, we would save immediately close to $600,000 in this first year. Now, future savings would be based on, you know, how is it performing, you know, the the market side of this, but essentially we have to to make sure we, you know, if our true interest cost is 3%, we have to make sure that you know, the the goal is that we're the 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 investment will average 3% or greater than, you know, over that that 20 22 year period.
Steve, one of the things that we talked about was the impact of low earnings in the first couple of years.
Yes.
The disproportionate impact of that. And and one idea that we had for, I think, what might be a helpful analysis was to say, what do we need to earn in these early years to sort of get ourselves out of the woods, so to speak? And I thought the the rep from Piper Sandler indicated that that was something that could be done. And we don't have to solve that particular problem tonight, but that might be something that that would at least kind of give us a little bit of peace. You know, just sort of knowing if we can get over the hump of the first few years, we you're in better shape kind of thing, you know?
Right, yeah. So there's on Lauren's presentation on page 18, there's a base case scenario, which is just showing 7.2% every year, which we know is not going to happen. It doesn't happen that way. Then on page 19, there's the 2002 scenario, which has done very well. It shows the the earnings each of those years, starting in 2022, as if it repeated what happened with the 2002 scenario, folks. And then there's a 2007 scenario on page 20, which is the only group of borrowers. I believe there were five districts that pulled together on that one. It's the only group that looks like they're going to end up coming out worse than than if they, you know, had just stayed stayed pat. And that's because they they sold, paid off PERS, and then a couple of months later, the Great Recession started and calendar year 2007 was at minus 27.18. And even though nearly every year since then has been positive, they project they're still going to end up on the negative side. I believe that the the presentation showed be because that true interest cost was it, I don't remember what the number is, it's not showing it here, but I'd have to find it. I believe their interest rate was a couple percentage points higher than where we are right now. So on the on the Eco Northwest study, what showed there was so it showed if we were borrowing at 3.5% and we took that hit, so page 20 of Lauren's presentation, it still shows us coming ahead over that 20 year period at 4.5 million dollar present value at 12.67% positive rate of return. And that's because the And that's because the true interest cost is lower than the two thousand seven group, seven group had. So it shows that our our, our ability to handle a catastrophic event in that first twelve months is a much better situation. Than the group that, that it actually occurred to in two thousand seven.
Right, it sure helps that the rates are historically low.
I saw here, it looks like the ten year is still at one, about one point five nine percent, which it has come up since February, since we really started talking about this, which is similar to what happened when we started talking about the general obligation bond the first time. We had, we actually paused a couple of times on that. And the thirty years, about two point two eight, which again has come up as well, but again, are still historically low.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Steve?
So I just say my plan would be to come back, obviously, at the June board meeting and give you an update on where things are at. Any new information that we've been given and give a full briefing on, you know, where we sit. You know, leading into July and then you know, assuming there's a June board work session, be able to update again and just give a lot of, you know, a lot of updates as we get closer.
Well, thank you. This will be coming up as an action item later on, this resolution. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask Steve, so when we are looking at the resolution, we can just say that we want to approve the resolution and give the title that it has in board book. Does that work?
Yes, I believe that would work just fine, yes. Approve the motion to pass resolution number five dash ten dash twenty one as, as presented for potential issuance of pension obligation bond.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that concludes our first discussion item. The next batch are all related to policy updates. And we have a number of second readings and third readings. So what I would like to do is I'm going to read them off and give a brief pause with each one. And if there aren't any comments, we'll keep moving along. So if you have something, just kind of be ready to say, hey, hang on a second, I'd like to talk about. So the first up is GBEB, which is communicable diseases. Anybody have any conversation around that one? Okay, and the next one is GBEB AR, also related to clinical diseases. And then there's GBEB JHCC AR, also related. Okay, next up eleven E, GBNA, which is hazing harassment intimidation bullying menacing or cyberbullying. And the related one, which is the AR, GBNA dash AR.
Jonathan?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that I did point out there were, there was a a very minor language inconsistency between two of the paragraphs. I sent that to Debbie. I imagine it will be corrected in our next reading. I just did, I did want to note that, so point that out.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to move into the final reading items, and there are several of them as well. And the first up is the bias incident complaint procedure. Any discussion around that one? Okay. Next up, BBAA, individual board members authority and responsibility. Okay, BBF, board member standards of conduct. All right, BBFC, reporting of suspected abuse and or neglect of a child. Right, the next one is a removal. It's COVID nineteen related. And there's sort of a paired one with an AR. So there, it's GCBDDAA. And then GCBDA-A-R. I mean, hang on either of those two. Okay, and the last two are related to criminal records, checks and fingerprinting. G CDA dash GDDA and the related AR. All right, excellent. That concludes all of our discussion items, which moves us to our second public comment. Anybody who would like to address the board, feel free to use the raise a hand option or to email Debbie Fella. We'll wait just a moment, in case anybody trying to connect. All right, Debbie, did you receive any emails?
No, I have not, Jonathan.
Okay, well, I don't see any hands up, so I think we're going to proceed. So that moves us into our action items. The first up is the pension obligation bond resolution that we talked about a few minutes ago. This point, I would accept the motion related to that one.
I move to approve. I move to approve resolution number five dash ten dash twenty twenty one. Authorizing participation in the Oregon Education District's pension bond program.
So moved. Moved in second. And any further discussion? Well, I just want to thank Steve for the, the comprehensive information and keep us posted on it. Thank you. But I don't have any concerns, so I'm ready to proceed personally. Right, Debbie?
Jonathan?
I go, yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
Right, thank you. Right, next up, we do have votes on the policy updates related to reading items. So I'm going to go on each one. Would accept the motion to approve that one.
Jonathan, could you repeat? I'm sorry, we're, how are we doing? Are you cut out for a minute? How are we doing these as a batch or, or?
I, I was going to go through them one at a time.
Okay.
I, I suspect we probably could pass a motion to approve all of the ones listed.
Oh, I wasn't necessarily suggesting that. I just didn't hear what you said. So whatever you think is best.
Yeah, sorry about that. I seem to have issues again tonight. So it, so we'll start with ECB dash AR.
I move to approve ACB dash AR.
Second.
And seconded. As we just went through the discussion, I will kind of skip ahead past that part and we'll move straight to the votes. Debbie, would you go ahead and call the?
Jen, Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, BBAA.
I move to approve policy BBAA as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Go ahead, Debbie. Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, BBF.
I move to approve policy BBF as presented.
You had a tie.
Lori, give it to Lori.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
All right, moved in second.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, BBFC.
I move to approve policy BBFC, reporting of suspected abuse and or neglect of a child.
Second.
And second, thank you.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, next up, GCBDDAA, COVID nineteen relatedly. I move to approve policy update, GCBDDAA.
Second.
Well, actually, it's deleting this one as I recall.
Oh, you, oh, I see.
Sorry, I moved to delete GCBDDAA. I should have said that differently.
Oh, okay. Second, to delete.
Moving seconded, thank you.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom? Lori?
Yes.
And Ern.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, the next up is GCBDAAR, which replaces it effectively.
I move to approve the deletion of policy GCBDA-A-R as presented.
Oh, I guess this one is all. My bad, okay. So moved.
Second.
And second.
Okay, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
All in favor. Good.
Next time I'll look into batch approach, I think. Next up, GCDA dash GDDA. Criminal record check and fingerprint.
I move to adopt policy GCDA dash GDDA as presented.
Second.
And second, thank you.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
And Ern.
Yes.
All in favor.
Right now, last but not least, the related AR.
I move to approve policy GD, GCD-A dash GDDA dash AR.
Second. Okay, Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
All in favor.
Excellent, thanks, everybody. Right, that item for future and I request. Anything anybody wants to bring up tonight?
Jonathan, just a huge shout out to the policy work group. Lori and Tom and Shelley's not here tonight, but also to Don Tacker and, and Mr. Let's but tremendous work. We've, we've gotten the process nailed down and we meet again this Friday and and we'll have a fresh batch coming to the board work session and, and it's a real team effort on there. And I think it really showed tonight. So thank you.
Yes, very much appreciate it.
Jonathan, yeah, there we go. I guess, just to piggyback on what you said, that if we could have next time a approval process for the, those that maybe is all in one. It might be tricky with the deletions, I don't know, but I guess we could make a motion to approve all the recommendations on the final reading or something like that.
Or maybe even just a policy with its related AR, you know.
Yes. Yeah, but I do want to say that I also appreciate the work of the policy group because it feels like somebody's taking a more of a, you know, a magnifying glass to those. So thank you for that.
Very, thank you. All right, any other items? Again, the item request.
Oh, very good. I do, I would like to have the board, I guess, informed about how things are processing with the long range facilities committee and where, where are they, you know, I'd just like to know an update on that. I sit in on the meetings, but I would like to hear that from our superintendent. Because I know that there's many things going on right now in our district, so. That would be for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lori.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I believe we are going to move into executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two F. To consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Specifically, this is a sick leave bank request. As a reminder, we all will drop out of this meeting and join the other length that Debbie sent out. Also, for those who are here, members of the public, we don't anticipate this being more than ten to fifteen minutes. Okay, so with that, I will see you shortly in executive session.
Thank you.
With that, that takes us to regular open sessions, so we're going to officially be returning. Debbie, yeah, Debbie, you're on, okay. And, and that takes us to seventeen consideration of a sick leave.
I move to approve a sick leave bank request for employee Jennifer Drew for up to fifteen days.
Second. Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Debbie?
Jonathan? Yes, thumbs up, Jonathan?
I go, yes.
Thank you, Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
I.
Lori?
Yes.
And Ern.
Yes.
All in favor. It's like Jonathan's frozen. It's like Jonathan's frozen.
Yeah, we gotta get him out of the freezer.
There you are.
There.
Well, good reminder of what the kids go through every day.
Yeah.
All right. Let's um, that moves us eighteen. Since I can't hardly get a word in, I'll just adjourn the meeting. How's that?
You. Re meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Adios.
Night.
Bye bye. Good night.